Good morning, everybody. My name is Alan Guewig, he/him, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Associate with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, SVCN. Today's an extra special occasion because I get to welcome all of you to our third of five nonprofit candidate forum. In today's forum, we'll have the opportunity to hear from the candidates running for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors District 1C. Now, if possible, we encourage all participants to have their cameras on and to make, and please make sure that your microphones remain muted throughout the forum. As an organization, SVCN provides these candidate fora to help provide nonprofit leaders with the opportunity to learn more about the ideas, visions, and just priorities of candidates for local office. We focus our discussions on issues that impact nonprofits as partners, government contractors, community-based service providers, and advocates. Now, while I go through today's guidelines, both us and the candidates would absolutely love to learn who exactly is in the room with us. So please go ahead and introduce yourselves in the chat with your name, your pronouns, your title, organization, and the native land that you reside on. While folks do that, as a continuing SVCN practice, I want to acknowledge that in San Jose, where I am today, I currently reside on the unceded lands of the Mawekmaaloney tribe. Together, let us commit to educating ourselves and advocating for indigenous peoples, communities neglected and displaced by the US government, and other colonial powers across the world. Since people here are tuning in from different areas, I encourage you to learn about what land you are living on by using the website my colleague will share in the chat and share that information in your introduction. For accessibility purposes, we do have the automated closed captioning feature in Zoom activated. Now with this, you do have the ability to move the captions around on your screen to a place more convenient for you, or you can simply disable the closed captioning feature if you prefer to just not have it up. To do so, please reference the bar at the bottom of your Zoom as pictured on the slide. Click on the live transcript on the right-hand side and then click hide subtitles. If you're having any tech or other troubles during the session, please don't hesitate to just private message me or any of my SVCN colleagues directly in the chat. Now, moving us right along, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce our moderator for the forum, Guy Mazurati. Guy is a reporter and producer for KQED's California Politics and Government's Desk based in San Jose. Guy joined KQED in 2013 and reports on state and local politics. He produced KQED's weekly radio show and podcast Political Breakdown and KQED's Digital Voter Guide. Guy is also a graduate of Santa Clara University. A welcome guy. We are so excited to have you in this space and the virtual floor is now yours.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you so much for having me at this event. It's so exciting to be here and see all the different nonprofits involved in making an event like this happen. And thanks to the candidates as well. Before we get started, I want to just go over some of the ground rules for today's event, some of the timing of today's forum. For the audience members, we ask that you please remain on mute while the candidates are speaking throughout the forum. And for the candidates, we're going to give you two minutes each for opening statements. Afterwards, I'm going to be asking you a mix of questions that SVCN submitted and also some submitted by audience members. You're going to have up to two minutes each to answer the questions and then an additional optional one minute for rebuttal. If you choose to take it, if you do want to make a rebuttal, we ask that you do so by raising your virtual hands on Zoom. So just make sure you know how to do that before we get started. And also, we're going to take just a quick pause before rebuttals to make sure our timer gets reset. So I'll ask you to hold on after rebuttal and then I'll cue you to go ahead for a one-minute rebuttal. For the convenience of the candidates and the audience members tuning in, we're also going to be dropping questions in the chat live as they're asked. And then kind of halfway through the forum, we're going to have a lightning round of questions. So it's going to be a mixture of fun topics and also some policy questions. And we're just going to ask for either a one-word answer, a quick yes, no, and then get back to our more long-form question part of the forum. At the very end, we're going to finish up by having each candidate share their closing statements and we'll give you each one minute to do that. Throughout the forum, we're going to have candidates speak on a rotating basis. So for example, Johnny Camus and then Sylvia Arenas on one question. And then the following question will have Sylvia and then Johnny. So we'll go like that until the end of the forum. For audience members viewing this on your screen, you have a couple of different options. If you only want to view the speakers, just leave the setting as it is. But if the shared screen with the timer looks too big on your screen, you can also toggle the middle line over and, you know, customize how big you want to see the speakers and the timer. Last note for our candidates, please remember to be respectful to each other and the time allotment for each question. We do have that timer on the screen, so you can see visually how much time you have to answer each question. So with that being said, I want to welcome both of our candidates. Former Councilman Johnny Camus, current City Councilwoman Sylvia Arenas, thank you so much. Welcome. And it's time for opening statements. So Sylvia Arenas, we will start with you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, guys. It's great to start my Thursday morning this way. I, Sylvia Adeness, and I'm a council member for the city of San Jose, where I really kept a laser focus on the needs of families and children in our community. My district is District 8. It includes Evergreen and a portion of the East Side. I'm running for the Board of Supervisors because our families are in crisis and so many of the paths to solving the crisis are centered around the county government. And I do this as a sense of responsibility, civic responsibility. I'm not a politician. I don't enjoy politics. When I first ran for office for school board, it was because my son wasn't getting the support that he needed in his local school district. And the more I saw that systems weren't supporting families, the more motivated I was to roll up my sleeves and just work on making real changes, system changes. I actually invested in obtaining a master's in public administration because I wanted to make generational changes. We've started those changes in the city of San Jose where departments like housing, police, parks and rec have finally adopted new policies that truly invest in the needs of our vulnerable children. And so from addressing homelessness to expanding healthcare and just recently childcare, it's been front and center. So many of the next steps really need to be at the county because that's where the resources and that's where the network is. And so I hope to earn your support and serve our families at the county level.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And now Johnny Camus, your opening statement.
Good morning, Guy, and I thank you for hosting this occasion. To let everybody know, I'm actually a refugee. My family and I escaped from Beirut, Lebanon when I was eight years old in 1976. And we settled right here in San Jose. I've lived here ever since. As a child, I grew up in low-income housing and I know what struggle is. We struggled to learn a new language when we first got into this country. We struggled to make ends meet. I put myself through college while working at Safeway food stores all over this area. And I earned a business degree from the San Jose State University. After that, I started my own business as a financial advisor and did that for 20 years. I only got into politics because I thought government isn't really working for us. We had huge budget deficits before I got into office and massive layoffs. Our police department was having layoffs. We had gone down from about 1,400 police officers down to about 900 when I took office. I worked to, you know, to save money and I looked for ways to save money. You know, one of my proudest moments, we didn't get any attention, is working with staff to actually reduce the cost of debt by changing the interest rates from 5% down to about 3.5% for all of our indebtedness, saving $32 million annually. And so I have looked at ways that we could save money. And before I left office, you know, we've had an increase in our police officers up to 1,150. And I'm looking for ways to make our government run better. I am not satisfied with the services that are being done by the county. And especially when it comes to homelessness and the rise in crime, I have new ideas that I want to implement and try something new because I don't think that we can keep doing the same thing and expecting different results.
All right. Well, thank you both for your opening statements. We're now going to jump into our round of questions. As you know, we're in a virtual room of nonprofit leaders throughout the county. We know nonprofits and the county partnered extensively during the pandemic, everything from vaccines to eviction protection. So Johnny Camus, I want to start with you on this one. What's your vision for how the county is going to partner with nonprofits as stakeholders and as contractors if you are on the Board of Supervisors?
I actually have a proud record of working with nonprofits. Just to let you know, I personally funded programs for the YMCA out of my council budget when I was in office to help our neediest kids with after-school programs and summer learning. So I do think nonprofits serve a great role. I supported, for example, Rebuilding Together and the Red Cross to provide, you know, to help our mobile home parks with, to get up, you know, fire code resistant and making sure that they had smoke detectors and making sure that the wood wasn't rotten on steps and things like that. So I am, you know, I'm proud to have actually rolled up my sleeves and volunteered with many of our nonprofits. I've worked with even more nonprofits, like I've worked with the Sobrato and Sand Hill Foundation to brought them together with, you know, churches who wanted to create housing. And I'm proud to say that the Salvation Army is now working to create homelessness shelter that's going to be funded by the Sand Hill Properties because of my efforts bringing people together. So I am proud to be building people together. But at the county, we need to make sure that we have, you know, achievable goals. We need to have outcome-based measurements so that we don't spend our money unwisely, so that we don't get duplicative services. So I want to create an office where, a position where somebody will oversee all the various monies going out to nonprofits to make sure that we're getting our money's worth. Not that I don't think that they're doing their job, but I think there's, even in the audit that was done by the county, they talked about better coordination. So we need to have coordination. We need to have measurable outcomes. And we need to have outcome-based measurements that judge the performance of nonprofits by the outcome of the patients and/or the homeless individuals that they serve.
All right, Councilmember Arenas, what is your vision for how the county could partner with nonprofits and work with them going forward?
Sure. I think I mentioned this a bit in my introduction, and so much of the work that the county does is actually carried out by nonprofits. And this is true in healthcare, in homelessness, in child and family support services. Even in the city of San Jose, we rely on our nonprofits to connect with the folks that are most vulnerable, especially during the pandemic. So it's really fundamental, I think, to the county's work that their success within these organizations and that they're reaching goals. A lot of what is vital, we need to deepen those partnerships and those investments in those partnerships. A good example is that many of the organizations that are struggling to hire more workers. And I myself come from the nonprofit world. I've worked in it all my career. And since I was in nonprofits, we've always had the shortage of workers. And then, and it's because the pay doesn't match to the level of work that they are investing in our community. So this, the struggle with workers doesn't really show up in the vacancies at the county, but it has the same effect. And that is that it prevents us from delivering the services that our community needs. And so I'd like to see an expansion of these partnerships to provide additional support to help nonprofits with the nuts and bolts of scaling their organizations. We had something very similar during the pandemic with one of our providers. And it's too often that our nonprofits can find funding only for very specific projects. And that money is to pay for basic operations and it's impossible to come by. So the overhead is very minimal that grants pay for. So we need to find ways to help our nonprofits to successfully work through these obstacles and to make sure that the workforce development moves forward.
Our next question is about behavioral health and it was brought to us by Don Taylor at Pacific Clinics. Thank you, Don, for bringing this issue forward. We saw at the beginning of the year, the Santa Clara County declared mental health needs and substance abuse a public health crisis. Obviously, addressing this mental health needs, the well-being needs is going to require collaboration between counties, cities, nonprofits. Sylvia Arenas, I'll start with you on this one. How do you plan to address the community's growing needs for behavioral health services throughout Santa Clara County?
You know, it's easy to point fingers to the systems that are not working, but these systems, we've inherited them from decades and decades and decades of decisions that are based on lack of investment or because they're too expensive, let's just cut them out. And so that's what we're seeing. These are the symptoms of systemic injustices and inequities. And so there are really two key next steps that we need to take for behavioral health. And they're not being talked about nearly enough. First is what I just finished talking about was the staffing shortages with service providers. We need so many more people to choose careers in behavioral health and then stay in our community. They're just not getting paid enough, just like any of our other first responders. We have to put them in the same category as first responders now because there is a mental health crisis. Some of our supervisors have recognized this and declared it. And so once again, we need to find ways to invest in pathways for local students to get into the field. I know that the county is doing like a $10,000 loan forgiveness. We just need to be even more creative for our folks. And we need to make sure that county behavioral work, health workers are just being paid enough for the really critical work that they're doing. The second thing is CalAim. And I don't know that a lot, we've been talking about this as it's rolling out. And it's a major reorganization of Medi-Cal initiated by the state. And the goals are to address homelessness and sufficient access to behavioral health. Children with like complex medical needs, clinical needs of justice-involved populations, the age and, I mean, just most of our vulnerable families and populations. And so what is really critical about CalAim is going to open up some opportunities for Medi-Cal reimbursement. So I think this is a golden opportunity for us to take a look at funding streams, to braid some of these funding streams, for us to have these kinds of coalitions and have these bigger upfront investments and developing programs.
Great. Thank you for that. Johnny Camus, what's your vision for improving behavioral health services in the county?
Well, I could tell you that I have been sounding the alarm on behavioral health and mental health for many years. I pushed to have the Lower's Law implemented. For over six years, I lobbied the county to implement it. It has finally gotten implemented. And many people are now receiving benefits for doing that. I could also tell you that I want to make sure our money's being well-spent and actually being spent. According to county's records, $102 million were not spent last year for mental health services. We need to look at how we can expand mental health services to help more people. There's literally 10,000, there's more homeless people with mental illness on our streets today than there ever was. And unless we are looking at mental health and looking at our own county properties, this is one of the things in my six-point plan that I have on my website. We need to take a look at our own properties, like the DePaul Clinic, that is actually not used almost at all right now. There's lots of properties that we can make sure get up and running to help provide services. We can expand the mental health ride-alongs with police officers for mental health breakdowns, you know, so that these calls, these 911 calls, don't turn into tragedies. We can expand the program where we provide high school kids with centers where they can come in and actually talk to a counselor. That is being tested and we need to have more of it. And yes, I agree with paying off loans for people who go into this type of work with psychologists and whatnot to help them, to attract them and say, hey, you know, we respect you and we want to have more mental health experts graduate from colleges. So why not pay for their tuitions if they decide to stay with us for a few years? I have many ideas on how to improve mental health services. But, you know, at a minimum, we need to start doing what we plan. And there are many mental health centers that have been on the books to be planned for many years and have not gotten across the finish line. So let's get the stuff done and get some results.
Great. Sylvia Arenas, I see your hand is up for a rebuttal, so you will have one minute to make that rebuttal. Just hang on one second while we reset our timer. Go ahead.
Great. I think it's short-sighted to take a look at what we're doing now and saying it's not working. I think what isn't working is the lack of investment that happened during the Reagan years, and we're seeing those symptoms now. The long-term care for mental health facilities were just removed, removed from the level of care within our counties, within a lot of our nation. And that's what we're seeing. This is a symptom of lack of investment. And so I know about, I know that a penny spent now is a penny saved later. But let's not save these money, let's not try to save money with short-sighted solutions. We need to make sure that we continue with a five-year homeless plan. There's already really good work. We can't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Johnny Camus, I saw your real hands go up in the air, so I'm going to give you one minute for rebuttal. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've never said this, throw out the baby with the bathwater. These words didn't come out of my mouth and I often get misquoted. What I have said is, you know, we should not be ending up with $102 million in our budget for mental health. We need to look at the programs and make sure that we can expand them. We need to look at our unutilized, we need to look at underutilized properties and make sure that they are used to help the people that need the help. And if that is a different way of thinking, I'm guilty. I want to think differently. I'm expecting results from staff and I don't think that we can wait around for, for example, eight years for a project that Valley Med to provide 77 new mental health beds that was submitted by Semenian when he first came into office that still does not have a contractor in place. These are not results that I want. I want to make sure that we actually execute on our goals and actually execute on projects that we have in place.
Let's talk about homelessness and affordable housing. We've seen in recent years, Santa Clara County focused on permanent supportive housing in its response to the local and regional homelessness crisis. Johnny Camus, do you think the county should stick with that housing-first approach that's really centered on getting permanent housing strategies up and built?
Look, and I think you reported on this today, Guy, and I could tell you that, you know, housing is important, but it's not going to help the people who are mentally ill and the people who are severely drug addicted. If you hand a key to a brand-new, by the way, most of these, you know, these projects cost well over $800,000 each. And if you hand the key over to somebody who's severely mentally ill and/or drug addicted, they're not going to be able to take care of themselves any more than they were when they were on the streets. We need to have inpatient medical treatment centers and those need to be provided by the county. Again, several of them are on the books. And if you look at Otto Lees and Susan Ellenberg's memo from about three weeks ago, you'll understand there's at least eight projects that have been held up for many years to create more capacity to help the mentally ill and the drug addicted with the inpatient mental health beds. And now that the Care Court system has passed, we need to look for capacity and make sure that we have systems in place to help the mentally ill and the drug addicted because those are the ones that are going to be coming off the streets. Now, again, I have many ideas on creating low-income housing and how to manage and how to create more units with the monies that we have. I've written several articles about them. Ways that we can buy instead of build. There are literally condominiums high-rises in San Jose that have been up for sale for a long time that, you know, the county and/or the cities can actually just buy condos. Brand-new outright. We can work with JPAs to provide, you know, ways to create low-income housing and workforce housing immediately instead of waiting for years. And a lot of people say that that might take some of the capacity away. But the fact of the matter is, a lot of these units are empty and they could be housing people that need the housing. Now, again, the housing, I'm not saying that we don't need housing. I'm just saying that the homeless people have other issues and we need to address the root causes of it.
Councilmember Arenas, would Supervisor Sylvia Arenas stick with this housing-first strategy focused on, you know, permanent supportive housing?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's critical that we continue to have that mindset and that framework because it aligns and it actually produces outcomes that we're all walking in the same direction, right? We all want the same things. We want wraparound services for those who need them. We need a variety of different housing affordability being built. And so, yes, absolutely. I think that that's something that we need to continue to do. We also need to make sure that we protect what is out there already. And that's something that I've been doing as a council member is protecting our inventory, making sure that folks don't. When you lose a home, it is so impossible to get back into one, right? We've seen this in the housing crisis. How many homeowners are back into their homes? I mean, the numbers are just not there. And so we need to make sure that, one, we have prevention. And so prevention is the best way to do this work. When people are out in the streets, we definitely need to have housing first. This is most effective. And we need to make sure that we all believe in the same thing. I think to purchase buildings is one way of doing that, but that's not the majority of the ways that we are trying to figure out homelessness. It is, it's the, when you take a look at who's taken advantage or who's benefiting from those purchases, it's the realtors, right? Those folks who've had these properties out in the market for a really long time and they can't sell them. And so here comes the city of San Jose to purchase with tax money and save developers or real estate brokers, or whoever those folks are. The truth is that we need to continue with the plan that we have. It is thoughtful. It is collaborative. And it represents the real needs of the community.
Thank you for that. Johnny Camus, I see your not virtual hand up again, so I assume you want to do a rebuttal. We'll have one minute set on the clock and you are welcome to start your rebuttal.
Yeah, well, you know, I could tell you that the current system of creating these long-term projects isn't working. You know, I have approved a housing complex six years before I left office behind, on Blossom Hill Road behind the Whole Foods. It took six years. It's still not being finished. And the cost is astronomical. The latest cost is $1 million per unit. That's according to the Mercury News a few days ago when they were talking about an 80-unit complex in downtown San Jose. You can buy many of these buildings for a whole lot less than $1 million a unit. So it's better for the taxpayers. It's faster and we can get it done more quickly. I don't know what the objection is of using our tax money more wisely. I don't even care if somebody profits because somebody profits anyway. The builders of nonprofit housing are not exactly impoverished. And so, and somebody needs to make a profit, fine, let somebody make a profit, but we at least get something out of it.
Councilmember Arenas, I see your hand is up. You'll have one minute for your rebuttal.
Right. You know, at the city of San Jose, we do have a lot of issues at development, actually. Johnny, you were leading some of those developments. We had a whole committee for it, but you didn't say, hey, let's just give up, right? You didn't say, let's just throw the towel in. You continued to take a look at the systems to see how we can improve that, how we can streamline it, how we can make it better. And so that's what we really need to continue to do. There's no reason that people aren't stopping everything to adopt this new strategy because it's not the solution for homelessness. And let me just say that the folks who are homeless are not all impacted by mental health issues. Some, you know, obviously, we're going through a post-pandemic and then post-housing crisis and people had just never gotten back on their feet. And so we do need to look at the systems and the origins of some of these issues.
Well, thank you both candidates for your answers and your rebuttals. We're about halfway through today's forum. And so we're going to get to our lightning round question. So once again, these are a mixture of some more fun topics with some policy-related questions. And we're just going to ask for a yes or no response on these, something one sentence or less. We're going to start with Sylvia Arenas and then switch off to Johnny Camus afterwards. The first one is your favorite movie.
Anything scary. I love it.
Johnny Camus, what's yours?
Star Trek Number Four, the original movies.
Okay. We'll go to Johnny, your favorite tradition or holiday?
I've always enjoyed Christmas with my family because we all get together and it's, you know, it's a great time.
Sylvia Arenas?
Easter. It's about renovation and recommitting.
Okay, this next one, I'm going to have a pen and write down the answers. Best restaurant in District 1, Sylvia Arenas.
Oh my gosh, you're really going to pivot me, pit me against a whole bunch of folks. There's so many of them. If you tell me about Indian, then I'll give you one for Indian and Vietnamese and Chinese. So I can't do it.
All right, Johnny Camus, do you have a?
I do. I don't want to get in trouble. I have so many favorite restaurants. I love, you know, you know, Tsugaru in Oak Ridge Mall is one of my favorite Japanese and the Mandarin Gourmet, one of my favorite Chinese. I have so many Indian spots. I have Boss Man's Pizza, which is something that I, you know, I love the creation, the fusion of Indian food and pizza of all things. So I have so many different, even South County places that I've frequented. So I have so many different um, uh, even South County uh places that, that I've frequented too. So I'm, it, it's tough to make that decision, but uh there's so many great restaurants in our, in our district.
I think we may just need to do a follow-up forum just focused on uh food in District One. So let's, Alan, let's get that on the calendar. Um, next question is about eviction protections. Obviously, Santa Clara County, the city of San Jose dealt with a tsunami of evictions during the pandemic. And one of the ways that the city dealt with that was by launching cash assistance programs. I'm wondering, Johnny Camus, if you think the county should keep investing in, in strategies like this?
Is my microphone working? Yeah. So absolutely. I, I supported the uh, the prevention programs. Uh, we spent millions in San Jose and I absolutely think that an ounce of prevention is way better than a pound of cure. We don't want these people homeless. Um, I, I, yeah, it, was that a yes or no question?
Just one, one sentence and you
Oh, sorry.
Knocked out of the park. Sylvia Arenas.
Yes.
Oh, I think you're muted. Sorry, it's tough with the, the, the quick back and forth.
Sorry, what was the question? I apologize.
Uh, eviction protection. So this is something that the, the uh
Right.
Basically, as a supervisor, do you think the county should continue with direct cash assistance um and investing in these eviction protection strategies?
Absolutely. Prevention is one of the best ways to continue to keep uh stability uh and a roof over and not only a, a family, but a child. Stability is so important right now. Um, post-pandemic coming out, there's just a lot that uh people are dealing with. And so, yes, absolutely.
I'll stick with you, uh, Councilmember Arenas on this one. You both know the city of San Jose holds community budget meetings where folks can give input throughout the process. Is that something you'd like to see the county adopt?
Actually, yes, that would be very interesting. Even though the county is very complex, I think that's, there's basic needs that our families um have expressed time and time and over again. And so, yes, absolutely. I think that that's one way to really hear the voices of our community.
Johnny Camus?
Absolutely. I think it'll bring trust in government and people don't even know what the county does, quite frankly. So absolutely. Most people I talk to don't even know what the county does with the money, nor do they think that they have eleven point seven billion dollars annually.
All right, back to something a little more fun. Johnny Camus, your hidden talent.
Some people would say I'm a pretty good cook. So I am certainly a good eater.
And Sylvia Arenas?
Um, uh, a hidden talent. I, I don't know that I have a hidden talent because whatever I have, I do share with my family and I actually, I, I make a, a wonderful barbacoa. Um, and, but it's one or twice a year. Um, so hidden talent is also cooking.
Nice. Um, okay, last on the hidden gem front, uh, sorry, last on the quick question front, hidden gems in District One. If you have a family member or a guest visiting, like, where are you taking them? What, what do you wanna show off? And we'll, and we'll stick with you, Sylvia Arenas.
I'm sorry, my, I think my, my inner, oh yeah, my internet connection is unstable. I'm being, there, there's a little thing here coming up. What, what did you ask?
Asking a hidden gem in District One.
There's so many hidden gems, but you know, I just recently went to Andy's um uh, it's a, it's a, it's a farm out in uh Morgan Hill and they have a little store that is so quaint and everything is organic and everything is just uh, just like stepping back into, you know, I don't know, the, the fifties or the forties. It, it just was absolutely fabulous.
Johnny Camus, your D-one hidden gem?
I could tell you that there's, there's quite a, an impressive amount of wineries on the wine trail in the county and most people don't have to travel to Napa to get some, get some great wines. Uh, thankfully, I have been uh invited to many of them. Uh, so I could tell you that that is a hidden gem that needs to be advertised.
Great. Well, we had a lightning round full of food and wine, so I would gonna call that a success. Uh, let's get back to our longer-form questions. Um, with a question about the county jails. Last week, the county's alternatives to incarceration community process began. Dozens of nonprofit organizations um have weighed in and, and currently oppose the building of a new jail. But we know earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors did vote to move ahead uh with the new jail. Sylvia Arenas, I'll start with you on this issue. Where do you stand? And if you opposed the construction of a new jail, what kind of alternatives to incarceration would you like to see come out of this process going forward?
Well, first of all, I think that the county is already working and the probation department already has some fabulous uh array of programmings for alternatives to jail, especially regarding youth. Um, we, we've gotta really find a way to move our system towards treatment. And at the same time, ensure that our jail is safe. You know, I wanna make sure that it's safe for our employees, that it's safe for those who are incarcerated and serving their time. Um, and as I continue to look at the options that the board has in front of me, there's two, I think for me, two guideposts that I'll use. And one is that the jail is safe and humane and, and, and moving towards providing treatment and care wherever possible. So those, that, that's what I'm really worried about and I'm seriously concerned about the current um state of, of the jail. Um, and especially if a new sheriff comes in, it, it is literally a reconstruction uh of, of a new sheriff, right? Of a new, of a new department. Um, I strongly appreciate, you know, the book board's decision to really take a look at um, at how to improve this and how to make it better for our um employees. Um, I, I think we have to work with what the direction of the current supervisors have at this point because I don't think we, we can say either way, we're gonna change it, right? They're, they're moving towards something. So now we take a look, we have to take a look at how expensive it is. It is absolutely outrageous when we're talking about being fiscally conservative or um aware. This, this is half of a billion dollars and, and growing. Um, so we have to take a look at where we are investing and making sure that behavioral health is being invested just in the same way.
Johnny Camus, looking back, do you agree with the board's vote? And then going forward, if you're elected supervisor, how would you like to see this issue play out in the years to come?
Look, being fiscally responsible is actually getting something done. We haven't gotten anything done. The, the, the inmates are not being served in any better facilities. This thing has been on, on the planning stage for fourteen years. I kid you not, fourteen years. There's been several evaluations that have taken place and we cannot let be the, the perfect be the enemy of the good. This, this, the latest version of this jail included an entire floor to, to, for skills training for people who are incarcerated so that when they get out of jail, they're better able to deal with society by having a skill, a marketable skill. Why not? That, that, that facility was gonna have two hundred beds for the mentally ill. And these are the violently mentally ill. They're not gonna be, they, they shouldn't be mixed in with the populations of, of, of regular inmates and they shouldn't be, you know, uh, allowed to get into society and hurt others and/or themselves. I think also the crime is on the rise and a lot of the programs that we had been, you know, as aspiring, you know, the second chance things, they're not happening. They're not working. So we need to look at the incarceration system dramatically. And not having these skills training um in-house is one of the things, one of the ideas that I've been uh working with. Uh, it's on my plan, on my website. We need to train people while they're incarcerated, not wait till they're out of the system to offer them voluntary services. This is one of the reasons we have so much uh increases in homelessness and crime. Um, a- again, uh, doing nothing is what, what actually they voted on. They're doing nothing. And we've been doing nothing for a long time and we know that nothing doesn't work. So we could study something to death, or we can get something done. It may not be perfect, but it'll, it'll, it, it was, it would have actually helped uh some of the people that uh, that are uh on the streets now and, you know, and hopefully are not gonna get into the revolving door of incarceration all over again.
Johnny Camus, we've seen over a hundred and fifty nonprofits sign SVCN's racial equity pledge so far. So many organizations here locally have been engaged in anti-racism work. I'm curious what your plans are to advance racial equity in the county and address the historical inequities that exist in our communities.
My plan is to look at, at uh needs, the needs of the communities who, who are underrepresented. Uh, quite frankly, when I was in office, I looked at, at an area in my own district called the Hoffman via Monte area, which had high crime. They had um areas where uh, you know, a high Spanish-speaking population. Um, I created a, a community and I created a homeowner's uh organization. And what we asked the city to um, to provide us services, I lobbied to provide services for the most in, you know, inadequate. Um, it, it was, it was actually a gang hotspot when I came into office. Before I left office, it was taken off the gang hotspot. We had so many people um thank me uh who, you know, who don't even know how to speak English. We, we, you know, so we need to look at areas where we could provide services. Um, I, I looked at many of the programs that actually Sylvia and I worked on um providing wifi for people who uh didn't um, didn't have it in many areas. We, we actually did, uh Jill Born from our, uh, our life, our fantastic librarian created programs for free tutoring online. And we also worked, uh, you know, Sam Licardo actually got corporations to donate laptops. Those are all things that could be done at the county level. We definitely need to, to continue to work on cre- and, you know, closing the education gap, for example, and making sure that people who have less opportunities have those opportunities. I'm a product of, of the, you know, I'm a product of, uh, you know, I'm a refugee. And so, you know, I'm, I wanna make sure that opportunities are there for all of us, especially those who are um, who, who have less.
Councilwoman Arenas, your thoughts on advancing racial equity as a member of the Board of Supervisors?
So I'm really proud of the work that we've been doing and I, I, and I did uh have some repercussions in terms of um, the mayor running somebody against me because we, I stood my ground and the other folks who were with me also stood our ground. Um, and we voted no on his budget because he didn't want to integrate um uh Office of Race Equity and take equity into our budgets. And unfortunately, my opponent supported uh, uh, our mayor. Um, and so we had to come back the following year and also fight once more um because uh our mayor wanted to invest one hundred thousand while um a council member as far as I myself fought for a million for that race, for that office. And so um, I'm, I'm really grateful that it, that it, it passed. Um, but, but actually, uh, council member, um, former council member Camus is actually one of the obstacles in getting there. Um, uh, the, the Office of Race and Equity, that's what we call it now. Um, you know, Johnny didn't want to have race as part of that title. And it, it's impossible to think about how to advance racial equity when you don't look at race, when you don't look at the systems who have been working against a lot of our, our folks. Um, and then when we look at our communities, I don't look at my communities and say, you know, in, in the same way that I don't look at our youth and say, there needs to be a program to help solve for what you're going through, what, what you are um, and what you're going through because you were the problem, right? What we need to do is take a step back and look at the systems, the systems that are creating these cycles of poverty, these cycles of crime. It, it's very systematically. And we have to take a look at that and not just invest and throw some money one year into a community and think that that's gonna solve for it because poverty is going to continue uh through generations. And so I continue, I, I think that this is something that we're gonna continue to do um at the county level and begin with children and families at the center.
Johnny Camus, you'll have, I see your hand up. You'll have one minute for a rebuttal. Go ahead.
So in, in the words of Dolores Huerta, we are one human race. And I, I did oppose the word race in the Office of Equity, which I did support. Um, I could tell you that I wanted to make sure that we provide services for people who need services. Um, and I don't want, um, you know, people being judged by their color in order to get services if they need it. Um, if somebody is Vietnamese and poor or if somebody Hispanic is, um, poor, I want them to be treated equally. Um, and so, you know, we, we, this is why I opposed it. The word race has been used to divide our community for many years. The, the word race throughout society has been used to divide people. And I wanna bring people together. I wanna bring people together to work on solutions for the people, for, for the needs of the community. I, so I was very much in favor and I don't, of, of creating uh equity through needs-based uh services.
Thank you for that. We're gonna jump back into a question about housing and Measure A. This was, oh, Sylvia Arenas, I see.
Uh, thank you. Can I rebuttal?
I see your hand just went up. We'll give you one minute for a rebuttal on this issue of equity.
Okay, what, wonderful. It, it, you know, this is, this is where um being a politician, um, and being somebody who comes from nonprofit, the nonprofit world and understands those inequities in a way that other folks may not. Simply because you're poor does not mean uh that you're not gonna succeed, right? Um, and I don't, we don't need uh programs thrown at our, at our families. What we need are real changes in our systems. We don't need another program. We need system changes, policy changes. What we're seeing now is a result, we inherited bad decisions from the Reagan administration around um behavioral health and, and mental health. We also inherited a lot of policies from folks who wanted to segregate us and have a, a, a apartheid, but a legal apartheid. So it, it does, we have to look at these systems and I think you're, uh, you, you miss the point when you don't look at system changes.
All right, we're gonna jump back to a question about housing, specifically Measure A, the twenty sixteen housing bond that was passed by voters in Santa Clara County. It's uh allocated nine hundred and fifty million dollars uh Plan Two in order to build permanent supportive housing, address the region's homelessness crisis. Question for you, Sylvia Arenas, whether you would support a potential bond measure like Measure A in the future, perhaps as early as twenty twenty-four to extend the county's commitment and strategy uh towards permanent supportive housing? And starting with you, Councilmember Arenas.
Sorry, I didn't hit my unmute button. Okay, so I, listen, I was a, a huge supporter of our Measure E, which is the best, which is a, a measure that passed and it's one of the ways that we're actually getting a lot of our work done at the city level. My opponent um actually opposed it. Um, and Measure A has been doing a lot of really wonderful work. It just passed. I mean, we, we have a plan. These are bureaucracies that are moving really slow and building in partnerships to, to be part of the solution. And we have a five-year plan that is the North Star for all of us. And so, yes, we, we need to continue to extend Measure A. Rome wasn't built in a day and, and simply because we think that it's not working midway that we're going to just shift and do something that is an easy solve. Again, we have to continue to do the hard work, which is changing our systems. That's the thing that is going to get us out of this. Otherwise, we are just putting, continuing to put Band-Aids. And so uh, a- absolutely, I think it's easy to criticize Measure A because building housing is so hard and it takes time. But we've never said to a developer, hey, you know what? You should stop because this is too hard for you. We actually encourage them. We subsidize them. We've given them uh lowered fees. I think that we need to continue to do the really hard work on our end so that we can continue to construct. We can't just buy our way out of it. We have to have a myriad of strategies in order to really have the, the solve for this uh affordability. This housing affordability is al- also a salary crisis. It's a cost of living crisis. When we say it's just not enough housing, that is just absolutely untrue. My parents purchased a home for ninety thousand. My dad, uh, in the East Side, my dad was a cook. He could afford to do that. There is no way a working family will be able to achieve the American dream in this city ever again.
Johnny Camus, your thoughts on going back to the voters in as soon as two years with a, another housing bond?
Absolutely not. The, the, the hot Measure A passed in twenty sixteen. It's not midway. It's almost over. They promised forty-eight hundred new homes. And according to your own journal, um, the last project, uh, eighty units were costing eighty million dollars. It's one million dollars a unit. How many units can you buy for nine hundred and fifty million dollars? Count them. That's nine hundred and fifty units. That's not forty-eight hundred, which is what we were promised. Um, I, I could tell you that even I, I think there's under five hundred that are now operating. Um, I wish, uh, I wish people would look at change. Um, what my opponent is doing is talking about doing the same thing and expecting different results. I am the one who's talking about changing the system. I am the one who's talking about changing the systems. Allowing the county to buy instead of build is a change. And it's a, and, and I think it should be absolutely in the cards because we are not building houses fast enough to house the people. Who, who need it. We're not building enough houses to, to house our teachers, how, you know. I, I'm, I'm the one who actually looked for new ideas. I brought in J P As. I, you know, J P As who are actually doing work all over California, but not in Santa Clara County. Except from, in my, um, Mountain View, where, where they are taking existing apartment units and converting them into. Eighty percent AMI housing units. And so, so for the workforce. So, yeah, I am the one looking for change. And you cannot, you, you cannot tell taxpayers that you've succeeded when you've only built maybe five hundred houses after six years. And, and spent nine hundred and fifty million dollars. I will never go to the taxpayer and say, hey, it, this was a success, so let's do it again. So no, I would not support another housing bond.
Sylvia Arenas, you'll have one minute for your rebuttal.
First of all.
Sorry, hang on one second till we get the, that, sorry about that. All right, go ahead.
First of all, I think that we need to pay people what they, what they deserve instead of subsidizing them with housing and choosing where they live. And second, it's, it's, it's ludicrous to think that J P As are going to be the solution. Actually, those are just tax credits for big corporations. I'm not against J P As, as long as the city of San Jose is a beneficiary and the tax. The residents aren't paying all the taxes so that a big corporation can get all of the benefit upfront. And then give us back these buildings where we have to invest all of the maintenance in the end. And this is not the solution. The solution is to continue to find ways to streamline affordable housing. And to think about the, some of the ways that, that we've done this for developers by having signatory. Projects, we need to have the same kind of focus and, and generous. Generosity for our developer, for our affordable developers.
Thanks for that. Johnny Camus, you'll have one minute for your rebuttal.
Well, you know, I, here we go again. My opponent is taking both sides of the issue. She just said she supports J P As, but she doesn't support J P As. Because she doesn't really understand them. I think it's, and, and this is just one of my multitude of ideas that I brought to the city council. One of the ideas that I championed early on before, you know, for many years ago, was to reduce fees and costs for, for all development. But specifically, we tried it with ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. And that project, when we, by doing so, we actually changed the conversation. And we were having twenty to thirty units per year permitted when we first started about reducing fees for ADUs. I just looked at this year in Ju, and at the end of June, we had six hundred permits for ADUs. And these are naturally affordable, you know, you know, so we need to start looking at different ways of providing lower income housing. And I have new ideas and I've written about them.
All right, we have reached the conclusion of today's forum. We will have one minute now each for each candidate to give a closing statement. Johnny Camus, we will start with you and your closing statement.
Thank you for having me. Again, I just want people to, you know, understand. We cannot keep doing the same thing, using the same ideas and expect different results. I have new ideas that, that actually that San Jose Mercury News endorsed me because of my new ideas. Mike Wasserman and many community leaders in the district, including Mayor Sam Licardo. And many past mayors of Morgan Hill, the current mayor of Gilroy, they're all supporting my effort. Because I have new ideas on, on reducing homelessness and crime by addressing the underlying issues. Like mental health, drug addiction, and people leaving the prison system without having skills. I have ideas on how to, to, to work with nonprofits to create more opportunities for housing. And more opportunities to help those who are unhoused. And so I have a track record of working with nonprofits and I look forward to serving the community as your next council member. Vote for Johnny Camus.
Councilmember Sylvia Arenas, your closing statement.
I thank you. Listen, I've spent my entire career working to make sure that our families have. An opportunity to succeed, to stay in our community, to have a quality of life that. I was able to, to receive despite having a working family. So from working in youth intervention to working at First Five, to serving in the school board. And also Gardner Family Health or on the council, each was an opportunity to help families like my own. Succeed here in, in San Jose and I hope now in the county and it's not come easy for our families. Each of us know one too many family members or friends that have been displaced. We've lost too many of them. They are the essential fabric of our community. And once we start losing that, we're going to look a lot more like San Francisco. Which it, it has its own things, but I won't go into that. And those folks are irreplaceable. They're, 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 they're part of what makes San Jose special. And so the, the knowledge I'm privileged. That I'm in privileged position to do something for our family keeps me up at night.
All right.
And it keeps me laser focused, so I hope that I can earn your support.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you both candidates for your participation, your thoughtful answers, your restaurant recommendations. I'm going to pass it now over to Alan for some important announcements.
All right, and thank you so much, Guy. And Sylvia and Johnny, thank you so much for being here today and sharing your goals and vision for the District One seat. And of course, everyone, a very special shout out to our amazing moderator, moderator Guy Maserati, who's been absolutely exceptional at moderating today's forum. All returns appreciated. We're so happy you all could join us. To the audience members listening, please go ahead and show your nonprofit love and appreciation through messages in the chat or by using those Zoom reactions down below. Our support for you all does not end here by any means. As a nonprofit association, we want to be accessible to you all as best as possible. So please go on ahead, reference the information listed on the slide and in the chat to best inform you all to how to contact our team. Thank you again, everyone, for joining us this morning and we hope to see you at one of our remaining two forums. Goodbye, everybody.